Good evening, one and all. We call this City Council Meeting to Order, 7:00 PM here on the 22nd, year 2013, for those who are keeping track. I'd like to ask everybody, please rise for an invocation and place your lead. Let us bow our heads. To Heavenly Father, please care for the men and women who serve this city and receive little recognition but are always there for the need calls. Please continue to watch over the citizens of this island, as everyone is very special. As we show tonight our support for all those who have faced breast cancer, dear Lord, please know that we love and care for them all and seek your hand in guiding for a lasting cure. For it is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Emily, please call and roll.
Councilmember Burgl, here. Councilmember Vitelli.
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Present.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Loftus.
Yo.
Councilmember Stone.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Cronin.
Present.
Minister Tupper.
Here.
Attorney Halverson.
Here.
Thank you, Sandy. Unfortunately, he's tending to his mother who was taken to the hospital today, so he's doing best service possible. Godspeed. He'll return. She'll return. Move on to the regular journal, previous meetings. You have in your packet September 24th minutes. May I have a motion to approve or amend?
Salute.
Second. Any deletions, additions, corrections? If not heard, in all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. We're up to citizens' comments. Before we turn the floor over to our auditing staff, if any citizens wishing to address council at this time. Going, going, gone. All right, now is the time at hand. David Phillips, who's our normal presenter, is off presenting somewhere else, and I don't think he's booked probably every night between now and the end of the year. He was double booked, so he's sending Emily Sobchak, did I say that right? She's gonna take over, and your responsibility within the firm is, what, greater Charleston area, or?
Yep, I manage all of our Low Country clients.
Okay.
So, Holly would like to...
The camera is specifically pointed... So their husbands can see this, yeah. And Genia's with the second...
Yeah, Genia's sports assistant.
She's playing women.
Well, I am happy to be here tonight to present the results of the 2013 audit, that's for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013. And you'll all have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation in front of you. I'm not gonna go through every detail that's included in the presentation, but please feel free to stop me if you have any questions, and I will be happy to try to provide an answer. So, let's see. We start out with just some highlights. We issued an unmodified opinion for 2013. Now, you might notice that that's a slight change in terminology from prior years. We used to call it an unqualified opinion. Unmodified opinion means the same thing, it's just a new term that they came up with that they thought sounded a little better. And we also wanted to highlight the general fund balance, which includes the disaster recovery fund increased by practically $500,000 compared to the prior year, and that's including the transfer to the capital projects fund of $600,000, that's for future capital projects. And we'll get into more detail in a minute. We like to remind council every year that the city's responsibilities include maintaining an effective internal control system and providing the financial information that's included in those financial statements. So, all the numbers, the disclosures in those statements are the responsibility of the city. Our responsibility is to audit those statements and provide an opinion. And like I said, we did issue an unmodified opinion for the current year. It is the best opinion that the city can receive, and so that's a clean opinion, that's what you want, and y'all should be proud of that. So now, we're gonna look at the general fund. The general fund's fund balance, as I mentioned earlier, increased during the current year by about $477,000. So, at year-end, the general fund had a fund balance of $5.3 million. And we break down the different parts of that fund balance. It includes restricted fund balance, related debt service, and beautification of about $250,000, committed fund balance for disaster recovery of $2.1 million, assigned fund balance for beach maintenance of a little over $40,000. You've got about $30,000 in non-spendable inventory, and that leaves you with $2.5 million in unassigned fund balance. And for the general fund, we always like to look at unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your operating expenditures. And so, for 2013, unassigned fund balance was equal to about 30% of your 2013 operating expenditures, or 28% of your budgeted 2014 expenditures. Now, the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, provides a standard general recommendation of a minimum of two months expenditures in your fund balance, which would be about 17%. But we always like to remind y'all that the city, being a coastal community, has, you know, certain aspects that make that minimum a little low. And so, your fund balance of 30% is considered healthy, that's what you wanna see, and it provides for a number of things, including cash flows to get you through the rest of the calendar year, since property taxes don't come in until late in the year, so you need to be able to make it through those last few months. And a healthy fund balance allows you to do that without having to issue a tan or other short-term debt. You also wanna provide for possible emergency situations or planned expenditures down the road. Now, we'll look at your general fund activity for the current year. You have revenues of $8.4 million. The bulk of this, as you would expect, were property taxes and licenses of permits. This was a slight increase from 2012, and about $573,000 over budget. And the biggest area where you were over budget was in your property taxes. They were over by about $328,000. Your general fund expenditures were $8.2 million for 2013, and the most significant expenditures there were in your public safety department. They increased slightly from 2012 and were just slightly under budget for 2013. And so, next we'll look at your enterprise fund. This is your Marina fund. And the Marina had an increase in that position of $181,000 for 2013 compared to a decrease of $190,000 in the prior year. And that's primarily a result of, in 2012, y'all had significant expenses related to the dredging project. So, you had about $600,000 in expenses in 2012 that you didn't have in 2013. And so, that resulted in the increase in that position. Your capital projects fund had a decrease in fund balance of nearly $500,000 in the current year compared to an increase of about $300,000 in the prior year. And your primary, your most significant activity there was related to capital outlay for the Merrick-Carmen-Arvange Park, and that was about $480,000. And also, the recreation baseball and softball fields, which totaled about $350,000. And the only significant project y'all had in the capital projects fund for fiscal 2012 was the phase-one drainage project. Now, we'll just kind of briefly highlight the other major funds. These funds were pretty consistent compared to prior year. The accommodations fund and hospitality funds both increased slightly compared to prior year. Your beach restoration fund didn't have any change in fund balance. Remember, that fund only recognizes revenues to match allowable expenses. And last year, you had significant expenditures for that fund related to the hotspot repair, but you didn't have anything significant there for this year, which was a good thing. And so, you had only about $20,000 in revenues to match those expenditures. And so, now, we like to look at the city as a whole. If you combine all the governmental activities with the business activities, add in the capital assets and the debt, what does the city look like? And as you can see, you have about $38.5 million in assets, which would include capital assets of $25.6 million, $11.2 in cash and investments, and about $1.7 million in other assets. You have $14.3 million in liabilities, which would include primarily your long-term obligations, totaling $12.8 million. And that leaves you with your net position of $24.2 million as of June 30th, 2013. Of that, $13.4 million is your net investment capital assets, so that's your total capital assets, less accumulated depreciation, less any related debt, would get you to about $13.4. You also have $3.2 million in restricted net position, and that would be primarily for the tourism funds. And then, you have $7.6 million in unrestricted. And as you can see, revenues for the current year were about $13.3 million, while expenses were $10.9, and those expenses would include depreciation of $1.4 million. So now, look at your capital assets. Capital assets, after accumulated depreciation, total $25.6 million at June 30th, 2013. That is an increase of about $700,000 compared to the prior year. Your most significant capital asset events during the year were the acquisition of the Merrick-Carmen-Arvange Park, and remember, that was partially funded through green belt funds, and you also received a donation related to that acquisition. You had close to $350,000 in expenditures related to the purchase and installation of the recreation baseball and softball field lights, and you purchased some police vehicles for $137,000. And then, you had the construction in progress of about $144,000 at year-end, which is primarily related to the drainage base-two project. So now, looking at your debt. Your debt decreased by $1.7 million as of June 30th, 2013 compared to the prior year. You didn't have any new issuances of debt during fiscal 2013. The most significant event that occurred during the year was the early payoff of all of the capital leases. So, as of year-end, no capital lease obligations outstanding, so that's great news and something that y'all should be really proud of. You have scheduled principal payments of $1.2 million and compensated absences, which would be your accrued vacation liability of $290,000. We also like to point out that after year-end, just earlier this month, y'all issued the general obligation refunding bonds of $1.45 million, and these bonds were used to refund the 2008 general obligation bonds. And the great news here is that, as a result of that refunding, your interest rate decreased from 5.15% to 1.7%. And so, that, of course, is gonna result in significant savings over the remaining years of the bonds. Just a few other items to highlight. We implemented a new accounting standard during the current year. It's Gatsby number 63. This didn't have a really significant effect on the city, other than changing some terminology. This is what changed. Instead of the statement net assets for your government-wide and enterprise fund full accrual statements, we now call it the statement of net position. And that...
What name are you gonna change?
You know, it's always exciting to see what new terms they give us. Keeps us on our toes. But that net position, that just means equity, so it means the same thing that assets meant. And that really, like I said, was the only significant change that y'all saw related to the city. We also wanted to point out, and just something for y'all to keep in mind for the future, is that we do believe that the city would benefit from a comprehensive financial software package. We think it would increase some efficiencies for the city and would be something for y'all to consider down the road.
That is on our game plan, is it not? The integrated accounting system?
Yes. And then, one other subsequent event that we wanted to report on was the joining with the consolidated dispatch operations of the county. And so, the fiscal 2014 budget includes about $290,000 in expenses for the transition to that consolidated dispatch, and that should be partially offset by a reduction of personnel Now, some things to look forward to in the future. No significant new auditing standards that we know of, but we do have some new accounting principles that are gonna be implemented. Next year, we'll be implementing Gatsby 65. Again, this isn't gonna have a huge impact on the city. There'll be a few new terminology changes, your government-wide statements will look just a little bit different, and some small changes on your fund-level statements, but not a huge impact. What will have a bigger impact on the city is Gatsby number 68, and this is the pension standard that we've mentioned in the past. We've kind of known that it's coming down the line for a long time, and this is the standard that's gonna require the city to report on the government-wide statement, the full accrual statement, a portion of the retirement system's net pension liability. And that would be the liability that's outstanding for the South Carolina Retirement System and Police Officers Retirement System. The portion that's allocated to the city, again, will be reported at the full accrual level. So, it's not gonna affect your fund-level statements, but we do, we'd like to bring it to your attention because it will significantly decrease your unrestricted net position at the government-wide level. And that one will be implemented starting in 2015. So, not next year, but following year, we'll get to see the impact of that. And we don't know a definite dollar value on that, but like I said, we do expect that to be a significant number. Now, let's see. For the compliance report, we are very happy to report that we didn't have any findings, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted related to our financial statement audit. That's something that y'all should be very proud of, and you have Linda and Debbie and your wonderful finance department to thank for that. They do a really great job, and it takes a lot of hard work, and they certainly do as well, and, you know, put a lot of effort into preparing for our audit, which we appreciate, and it really shows. We did not do what's called a single audit for the current year, and that's the compliance audit that's required by the federal government when the city receives and when they expend more than $500,000 of federal grant awards. And so, like I said, that wasn't required for this year, but it's always something to consider in the future when you're thinking about accepting large federal awards. They always come with strings attached, so...
Strings and honors.
That's right. We did issue a management letter this year, as we do every year. That is primarily including required communications to the city, lots of just standard language in there. And then, it also includes any significant recommendations that we had that we wanted to make sure to bring to your attention, put in writing. And this year, we just have one long-term recommendation that we've had for several years that I know that y'all have been making a lot of progress on, and that's to continue to formalize and document the policies and procedures of the city. And, you know, as we all know, that has to be a working document, something that's constantly changing as, you know, as new procedures get implemented, as new controls are put in place, and as technology changes. And so, we just like to, again, keep that in y'all's mind, that it's important to document those things so that, you know, if there's a personnel change, that someone else can come in and know what they're supposed to do, and they're the right way that they're supposed to do it. So, in summary, again, we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you could get, and we're happy to say that the financial condition of the city is strong, and y'all have been doing a great job as council to keep that financial condition strong and to make it stronger year to year. So, thank y'all so much. Does anyone have any questions?
We obviously have questions.
Yeah.
First of all, this is the first, probably only copy so far of the policy and procedures for the city. It's now in living ink, and it will be synthesized and formalized yet this year. So, we have made great progress. The staff has made great progress. We, in council, haven't touched it. It's a good thing. I have one question, and I suspect there are others. Back, I'm not sure which slide, back a couple, but you don't have to go there, but you said in 2014, Gatsby 65.
Yep.
Current and prospective bond issuances, the cost will be expensed, as we heard.
Yes.
Our existing bonds, did we amortize the costs of those bonds?
We already do that, meaning any bond issuance cost we expense in the period that the bond is issued.
Issued.
With the exception of, there are some unamortized bond costs on the Marina balance sheet, but it's a small number, and they will just be expensed in full next year, isn't that right, ladies?
Yeah.
And the amount is...
Around $40,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, about $43,000 on the Marina funds.
Okay, so, we're gonna recognize that in this next fiscal year. You said, becoming effective in 2014, this calendar year 14, but...
Fiscal year 2014. So, it'll be for next year's, the year that we're in right now, the next year's audit.
Must be other questions. Jimmy?
Page eight of your report, you state on interest on long-term obligations, is Under expenses, government-wide financial...
Yes, sir.
That includes the interest on the current portion of those notes and obligations of the bonds?
It does. It also includes any accrued interest as of year-end, because that is looking at the governmental activities, the full accrual.
Right. Would you briefly describe to us that, are, is there still three major opinion categories as far as opinions that you issue on financial statements? Is there still, I understand that it's unmodified now?
Yes.
Right? But would it be modified and then adverse?
Right, right, yes.
So, there's three opinions.
And then, the fourth option would be for us to disclaim an opinion, which...
Right.
Wouldn't give an opinion.
Right. So, I mean, I just wanna make sure that you're not here to give us an A or a B or anything like that.
That's right.
Right, it's a, we, I'm really glad we have an unmodified opinion, but we'd be in big trouble if we didn't.
That's true.
Right.
Right. Yeah, typically, a modified opinion would mean that...
You found discrepancies or internal control problems or something.
Right, that there's something in the report that we either cannot define on because we haven't been able to sufficiently test it...
Right.
Or that we don't believe is materially correct, so we could say, we think that the financial statements are materially correct except for this particular fund, or, you know...
Well, I think the city staff does excellent job with the maintaining of the records and presentation of financial statements to you, because you know your work a lot. Y'all are a good-sized auditing firm in South Carolina. How many municipalities approximately do you provide full audit services to?
I would, I would guess...
A bunch?
A bunch, maybe even 20, I would say, roughly.
Are most of your opinions unmodified?
They are.
You're like way up there, right?
Right, yeah. We...
You would think more than 90-some percent.
Right.
Right, we rarely, we rarely give a modified opinion or an adverse opinion, because, like you said, that would be a really bad situation...
Right.
For the most part. And so, while we always like to highlight that an unmodified opinion is the opinion that you want, the other thing that we like to highlight is that we do always issue the compliance report, what we call the yellow book report, required by the governmental activity standards, or I'm sorry, the governmental auditing standards. And that's kind of what distinguishes one government from another and how well the finance department is doing their job, because it's not uncommon for us to have findings related to our financial statement audit in that compliance report. And that would be where we've identified significant deficiencies and material weaknesses that have been corrected during the year, and so, we would issue the unmodified opinion, but we would still highlight those errors. And like I said, the city didn't have any findings...
I think, as far back as I can remember, we've had, it used to be called an unqualified opinion, now it's unmodified. But that, it's just, that language doesn't come from them, you know?
Well, that's a natural...
That's from the ICPA, so don't blame them.
That's right. And it's the same for if y'all were a for-profit entity, if you were a school district, that unmodified opinion is standard language.
Right, all that, thank you.
Okay, other questions?
One quick. I know we're working towards that integrated accounting system. Out of all those communities that you do, how many don't have an integrated accounting system?
I would say more than not. More don't have one than you.
Is there a good model that we could, I'd say under me here, is there anybody we can go look at and say, this system works? We wanna buy a package, not a...
I will say, we have yet to see a perfect model, or one that everyone's happy with. And for municipalities, we see a lot of different softwares. Most of the school districts that we work with use CSI, which they are pretty pleased with, but I don't know that, like I said, none of them are perfect, so we're still waiting on that one kind of...
Keep looking. They need more eyes out there to find that right system. And it won't be perfect here, but the least amount of modifications that you can make and attachments to...
Right.
Would be best to, and we do have it in the long-term plan for another year, next year, 15 or...
I think it comes up next year.
I think it's a 15, you know, if it survives the switching process, and the trauma process too.
Right, conversion is the hard part, but then, you know, it pays off.
Any other questions? I wanna thank the financial staff for, Linda, for all the work. I say the financial staff, looking at...
Lauren?
Lauren, I know, has read all that information. If it doesn't come together, our auditing team would be here a lot longer. Not that they don't like it here, not that we don't like having them, but having them see their taillights go across the... It's always a comfort to feel like...
And also, we do appreciate that, you know, y'all are one of the first municipalities that we're able to finish the audit, issue the report, present the audit. You know, we still have a lot, a long way to go before our audit season is over, and so, that says a lot for the great job that y'all do as well, that not only are we able to get in and get out, but that we're able to get in and get out, you know, early in the fall as opposed to December.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Once again.
Thank you.
And how many copies of the video do you want?
Well, you said it'd be online, right? So, I just sent it to everyone I know.
That's riveting. All right, let's move on to... All right, let's move on to reports from standing committees. The Ways and Means Report, we met at five forty-five on the fifteenth. Our fiscal year FY fourteen, twenty-five percent are already through the year. Doesn't feel that. We are twenty-five percent through, all departments are under budget. Presently, running at twenty percent of budgets on our expenditures. Property tax revenue has been collected for July and August. And that's of note, only because last year, we collected those months in October and November. So, the county activity is working much better this year. Hopefully, we can rest easy as the property tax activity picks up. We did have an item to review, and that had to do with parking. We're quite a bit ahead of previous years. The change year over year was identified as fifty-seven thousand dollars for the three months. Part of it was due to timing, eighteen thousand dollars, another twelve thousand, nine hundred was increased due to payment, as prompted payment. And then, we had some, only four thousand dollars on increased meter revenue, partly due to the increased hours in parking meters, moving from six to eight o'clock every time. Tried to explain the parking, and we're continuing to pursue all of that. Our tourism funds, we received our ministry recommendations. Tax seats for the month of September, which represented August, which puts us now potentially twelve percent ahead of prior year, which is an excellent position to be in. That was the largest income we received in a single month for any month of September. So, that's all good news. We didn't receive anything from the state, et cetera. We did collect our hospitality tax, again, sixty-six thousand dollars from twenty-six payers. One particular payer gets current will be at nine percent over prior year, so that will be well received. Our project status is really not much activity. We did record available funds in our drainage schedule of another hundred thousand dollars. That's the CTC grant we received last month. And so, we have over two hundred, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars thereabouts, available to us as we proceed on to identify the steps necessary to work on these two drainage. We had a long discussion related to the French beach restrooms. A lot of discussion as to what is physically possible, given the strengths that we have on a fifty percent rule, it's in the V-zone, any of our properties fall under fifty percent rule. We looked in very detail as to what that property, what the appraised value was, what the fifty percent rule would mean, how much work we could get done, which was very limiting. Looked further as to what other options we have, given the location being in the V-zone. We also looked at the fact that we moved it just across the street, get out of the V-zone, we could then build it on the ground. The V-zone requires to move it from a twelve-foot elevation to a nineteen-foot, there's no major ramps, and limited access, much more difficult, therefore, higher cost if we were to replace the restrooms. If we moved it across the street, as discussed, that we could do it. There's some flood protection devices, because it'd be days, eighties. In so doing, we moved, in motion, to request the staff to put out an RFP for an engineering scope to look at building a new facility on the properties that we have on the front beach, whether it's this side or across. Have the engineering scope to look at both, and see if it would take us. So, our staff is taking that action and moving forward. We looked at whether we should extend the kiosk parking. On a ongoing basis, we made it up to eight P.M. Decided to table that until it was reviewed from a public safety standpoint, because the recommendation was made, make it available to residents to free to park between six and eight o'clock by use of the parking re-entry stickers or any other mechanism you so choose to allow the residents, to identify residents and allow them the opportunity to visit the restaurants and other facilities on the beach. So, that is going to be taken up in public safety. We then had, under new business, a long discussion from our public safety committee recommendations. This deal with our fire staff started with the addition of three personnel in fire station two, to have station two personnel, basically staffing-wise, from here to station one. I'm looking at the chief here, telling me I'm doing wrong, which she... That, of course, as they deliberated that, and as we discussed all that, that took us to the consideration, why we're losing firemen at the rapid rate that we have been. They have studied it, personnel committee has reviewed it, and is recommending that we consider salary range change to be more competitive with the local area fire staffs. And so, that is still under review and going to be taken up in more detail at our next Ways and Means meeting, as more details get presented, as members of council absorb the information that was presented. I wanna note, as was noted at the meeting, that the fire staff made an excellent presentation to council. Most of the questions were anticipated and answered before we got there. Those that were asked were answered professionally and, I think, with clarity. So, I hope staff and the rest of council absorbs all that we heard, and we take it up at our next meeting. But I'm looking forward to making our firefighters continue to be first-class in every aspect, including compensation here on the island. As I'm turning pages here, you can tell it was four or five pages worth of discussion, and well worth the time we put into it. We then took up question, advice from Real Property Committee on two subjects, one of which I'll make a motion on now, and that was to approve a change order to coastal science and engineering's contract in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars to increase the frequency of monitoring, to do it on a quarterly basis on the beach inlet area. As those of you who frequent that area, live there or visit there, know that we've had some significant erosion over the last year, really, it's been about a year, at the breach inlet area. The question is, has not really rebuilt, has not shown much sign of being rebuilt. But coastal science and engineering has presented us with some options. One option is to monitor it on a quarterly basis, to see if we are actually making improvements if sand is approaching, and again, causing accretion in that area. If so, we'll allow accretion to take hold. If not, if it continues to erode, we'll have to take further actions. And coastal science had another option with us, which was to start a, I don't wanna say permitting process, what's the other?
The feasibility study.
Feasibility study, which do a lot of the engineering necessary before we started the permitting process. Permitting process is very expensive, the time-consuming. The feasibility study is expensive, but not nearly as expensive, and can be done by these folks with reasonable dispatch. And we'll see how the quarterly monitoring goes, so...
Can I second that?
I'll make a motion. Just keep going, I'm gonna roll here.
I was gonna ask you if that was a motion after...
I just, I'm sorry. Good catch. I have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Excuse me.
Jimmy?
This is coming out from Beach Maintenance Fund, which has a balance of about four hundred thousand dollars, and is budgeted, correct?
The monitoring, this monitoring is not budgeted, but that is the correct balance in that fund.
Thank you.
We budgeted monitoring, but this is an expansion of the scope. And that expansion of the scope is, will be twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars more than the number that was budgeted.
Okay, three seventy-nine, one twenty left, is that, that's budgeted, has been spent?
No, it's just there.
It's just there?
Case we need it.
Okay, thank you.
The other point I wanna make is that if we determine in any of these monitorings that it is accreting, we can suspend the monitoring effort and don't have to spend all of the money there. Okay, any other questions, concerns? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries, thank you very much. The other item taken up, we'll hear more about it when Real Property presents itself. Tonight, had to do tidal wave docks and the activities going on there. We had a budgeted activity where we were going to be replacing the tidal wave docks. The recommendation now coming back from Real Property is to do a rehab, is that it? A proper term, rehab, which would be a lot less expensive. And in that process, allow us some time to see how we're going to live in time around the site and tackle this element sometime in the future. We'll hear more when we get through to the Real Property Committee. So, we will be meeting again on the nineteenth at five forty-five.
And it's the same day as City Council?
Same day as City Council, so we have double that. I guess if we tell them two, three, four times, they would... Any questions for Ways and Means?
Mayor, during the Ways and Means, we talked about the proposed increase of salaries for our firefighters. And we were supposed to get some details of data of other communities, and we have not received that yet?
We have not finished collecting all the information yet, the fire department's working on it.
So, we made a proposal without having all the information?
No, we had some, we're just continuing. We had a handful, I wanna say, that went before the personnel committee. It was about, I don't know, maybe five, or five communities. But we're refining that and looking, you know, asking some questions related to health insurance and things of that nature, to just get a little more in-depth information. But the personnel committee actually did see that data when they made their recommendation.
You'll get it well before the Ways and Means.
Ms. Mayor?
Please.
I thought it was very interesting that the very next day after our meeting, there was a news story on Channel Two about the city of Charleston Fire Department. I just went, were they watching our show the rest of the morning? So, anyway, it was very timely, I guess.
You can't, you can't control everything. We try, but, yeah, that was, okay. All right, let's have a public safety committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety Committee met at five o'clock Monday, the twenty-seventh. First order of business was talking about fire department staffing. Again, excellent presentation by the captain, chief, Smith, and chief Green. Now, I will go through many pages, since you did a great job. We also, also discussed the extension of the kiosk and parking lot hours, which is, we're going to come back to the public safety committee this month, and we'll discuss it further with this more information. Highlights of departmental reports, I'll be very brief. As far as the fire department, on September second, there was a plumb to an area here, Island Dock, where people jumped off their boat and the boat floated away. They were rescued just prior to a major lightning event, so a good catch there.
I see the chief smile. They were rescued just prior, but they were still on the boat during the lightning?
Yes, yes, they were. They put their umbrellas down when lightning started. On September tenth, a person responded, personnel responded to eleven hundred blocks of Ocean Boulevard for a person in full cardiac arrest, and he was transported to a local hospital. On September twenty-second, personnel responded to a possible fire that turned out to be a grill on the back porch. And on the twenty-seventh, personnel responded to the docks of the Boathouse Restaurant for a boat on fire. Of ninety-five incidents, fifty-one were medical calls. Police Department report, they held a meet and greet in front of the Citadel Beach House in the parking lot, some residents attended. The next meeting is scheduled for October twenty-fifth. I'm not sure of the location, but if you go to IOP.net, it will be posted there. In September, dispatchers responded to a total of three thousand, nine hundred and five calls. Of that number, three thousand, eighty-five were for the Alapalms Police Department. There were three hundred and forty-six traffic stops that produced eighty-seven tickets. Officers wrote one hundred and thirty-five reports and had twenty-four arrests. Fourteen of those were for liquid law violations. In September, officers received twenty-five notice complaints and issued eighteen citations. And we have two officers begin the training at the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy last month. Under miscellaneous business, a lot of little announcements. The Rhode Island Eco Fund will be held on Sunday, October twenty-seventh. This is very low impact for the rest of the island, you probably won't notice what's going on. And thanks to all of the island's public safety personnel who assisted in connector Run, and over cleaning the fire break, we just had, the correct connector run was a very well-intended event this year. Not only fire and police, but all of our city employees helped out with that, and it was a very good event. And it's not too late to sign up for next year, not too early either. Little GPS problem with some of the voices on your dashboard, getting wild doons. They seem to be turning people onto Forty-S sixth Avenue towards the ocean. And that's being looked into, and will, hopefully, will be fixed very soon. We're working with, Wild Doons is working with all of the navigation companies and all that. Just trying to get it straight, so their system will be right. The Coast Guard is going to be training off the coast of Alapalms and Sullivan's Island in October, November, and December, and into two thousand and fourteen. So, I've seen a few helicopters already. I don't think, I'm paranoid just because they're only over my property, but they'll be here on and off for a while. We also discussed virus-infected dolphins, which are moving down the Atlantic coast. You may have read some of the news articles where some lost shore further on up the coast. That trend seems to be coming down this way. Should you see one, please do not touch it, as humans can be contaminated. Call, call local police, call DNR, and they will be dealt with properly. Our next meeting is Monday, November eleventh, in the upstairs conference room. Any questions?
Questions with Jimmy?
Quick question. On those police meet and greets, and I read in the minutes where you're gonna continue, I attended at least three of those, and I was not impressed with the numbers. But, you know, our officers are there, there are probably at least three cars and manpower. So, I just wondered, could we not find a better way to bring our public and our police officers, safety officers, together?
We'll discuss now what they're doing now to encourage participation, as they're actually going door-to-door, and letting the folks in those neighborhoods know that they're going to be having one, where it's gonna be in the...
Short of offering cookies and alcohol, I would say, what more could you do to get people out the door today? Because they're right in the neighborhood.
No, it's a great idea.
They don't know in advance, so it's not like, come see me out there today, and let them know in advance, and we'll be here a couple of days, please come see us, and all. I agree.
I was just discouraged...
It's a stand attendance.
I was discouraged for the officers who were there, you know, who wanted to have the interactivity. So, anyway, thank you.
All right, any other questions? We want a lot of public words, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Oh, everybody, I'm sorry.
You're here?
No, I'm next.
Thanks, Mayor. Commandment, October second, went to all command members present. Under the department report, Director Pitts stated in September, the island returned to its once-a-week garbage collection, so opened up time for us to do other things that are needed throughout the island. And the focus of the month was beginning the fall, beach path maintenance. I noticed going up and down the beach paths, just to see if they cleaned out. Four beach sweeps were to take place in the month, and that forty-sixth and fifty-second avenues had to be pumped following that rains of liberty. We've had some costly equipment repairs that month, as anticipated when you're using it that much, infrastructure. Again, September, the yard debris continued to increase to about twenty to twenty-five tons. We noticed a steady increase all the time. And the garbage collections were now flat, which was, we've always known was a decrease, but now we need to steady it all, but... but now we need to steady it all, but. We've also had some discussion perhaps about looking into an ordinance where landscape contractors have to remove some of the debris when they're done clearing lots. We might have even, and I know it's the last couple of weeks, the large amount of debris piled up on the streets, most people are doing that a lot. So we're going to continue looking at that, looking at the municipalities and see what law they're utilizing. We had an update on the public questions, as we did, as you had discussed in Ways and Means. We had some new discussion, a lot of, an ongoing sinkhole on Seaboard's Court, and trying to revive what, where it's coming from. And everybody's got the, not me. And everybody's pointing to somebody else, so we've looked into the county to come back out and look at it, try to determine, and probably get in there and scope it out and see what needs to be done.
And we have ordered a locations survey, too, so that should help.
So we're going to, we're going to figure it out. Figure out where it's coming from. Could be water, could be sewer, could be any, anything up for it, so kind of outside of that.
Has this recently appeared? I mean, I know there was an impression there forever. It was essentially these persons.
Yeah, and that's one thing I've been noting, it has been escalating. It is getting deeper, it is getting more aggressive, you're going to make sure that it gets over. Before, it creates problems, people, the experience that around Alapalms were actually created, caved in, so.
Okay.
We're looking into it. We had a report, we had one of our garbage trucks, we sent out for R B, when we were in, ninety-nine garbage truck. We had one bid for three thousand dollars, and the salvage value was about thirty-one hundred dollars, thirty-two hundred dollars. We decided to not take any one of those, but take the garbage truck and put it on the municipal.
And it ran out today.
Okay. And hopefully we can pull in a little bit better revenue for that, for other municipalities that are in the need of a chicken used garbage garbage.
The tires might be going free now.
So we're just trying to get our best return on investment for that. That's really it. Our next meeting date is November sixth, five thirty.
Any questions for public works? Thank you very much. I know public works is impacted by all the workers going over here with the power tower going in. They're supposed to be out of there. I talked to the former supervisor, whatever his title is, the other day. Shortly, they've already pulled the cable from here all the way up to the first platform. They have to be insulators and other things on here, but we should be clearing out of our lot here pretty soon. They hope to turn this contract over by Thanksgiving. Then it just turns to the power company, South Carolina Electric Gas. They have to, they're going to do their work, including insulators and whatever they have to do. So there'll be more people on the lot off and on for the next few months. I'm glad we didn't do anything constructive on that lot till later tonight. Okay, thank you. Let's go out to rec, please.
We had no meeting, but there are a few things to report. Again, the success of the Connector Run, there are twelve hundred and sixty people to the fire department run. Another plus at the rec department, the automatic handicap access door is now operational, so you can just push a button and the door will open for moms with strollers or children or whatever. Upcoming events, the Ghostly Tide Tales is October twenty-fifth at seven P M on the beach at Twenty-eighth Avenue. And don't miss the Halloween carnival, get your costumes ready, at the rec, the thirty-first, five to seven, and five-thirty is the costume competition. Our next meeting is November fourth, four P M upstairs.
Okay. Any other points for rec, Jimmy?
Ghosty Tales and Friday. Oh, I thought, sorry, Miss heard that.
She said the twenty-fifth, but it's, it's.
Which one?
I heard the Halloween, I forgot the ghostly.
All right, let's go to personnel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The note, personnel meeting was held Thursday, October third, two thousand thirteen. The minutes from the previous meeting, September fifth, were unanimously approved. The agenda was reordered to address the staffing in the fire department by Battalion Chief Jason Smith and assisted by Chief Grant. The same presentation was made for Ways and Means Committee last week. Chief, the chief noted that there, that to be totally in compliance with BOSHA and NFP A standard, the city would need to respond to a J C Long style home with fifteen personnel. The IOP Fire Department could only respond with nine. Personally, I would hate to have my family in that situation. Councilman Stone moved to bring the salary considerations and merit adjustments to Ways and Means Committee. The motion was unanimously approved, and we did talk about it at the last meeting. Next was two thousand, two thousand and fourteen appointments for the boards and commissions were discussed. The ATACs, the committee had two positions to fill, since the committee had voted to retain Malcolm Burgess, Jim Covington, and David Nelson. Mary Alice Cruzey opted not to be reappointed, and Sandy Terrence will be elected to council. The committee agreed that Carol Rice's association with the Charleston Tea Plantation qualified her for the cultural seat, and unanimously nominated her. Susan Heaney was unanimously nominated for the at-large seat. Boarding of zoning appeals, the committee nominated Jay Lee to replace Scott Davidson for the board of zoning appeals. Planning commission, the committee nominated Lisa Stafford for the planning commission. As for the poso, the committee nominated Carolyn Holcher to fill the seat currently occupied by Francis Anderson. There was no new or miscellaneous business. The next meeting will be nine A M Monday, November fourth, at nine o'clock. And the sweepstakes winners, building department Kathy Kennedy, police department Craig Comson, public works Willie Powell, and fire department Chris Rousie. Are on.
Russ. Russ.
Is that right, Rousie?
Russ.
Russ. And our next meeting will be November fourth at nine A M. And that's.
Questions, Jimmy?
One question. The appointment as a cultural seat has experience with the Charleston Tea Plantation? Is that correct?
That's correct.
I didn't, I don't understand. Question to the.
Carol Rice. Carol Rice.
Yeah, so she's associated with the Charleston Tea Plantation, and she's being appointed as a cultural seat. Is that correct?
That's the recommendation from the first.
Carol Rice's association with the Charleston Tea Plantation qualified her for.
He's trying, he's trying to relate culture to the tea plant.
Right. That's the only question. It's not a big deal, but I just wonder why she would get the cultural seat. We all love tea, you know? We drink at cultural events.
South Carolina tea.
And they, they have, they do tours out there and have events related to the history of, you know, the tea in South Carolina.
Thank you very much. It's more than just drinking.
Yeah.
Summerville has the sweet tea.
Sweet tea.
Very sweet. If you come here, you learn a lot, too.
Every day.
All right, real property, please.
I'm going to handle real property. Councilman Stone is out, so I'll take it. My real property committee met on the third of October, five thirty, all committee members were present. Comments from Marina tenants, Jay Clark from Oregon Creek Real says he's working on his assigned task for maintaining control boats there on this portion of the docks. Under old business, we did have status of the tidal wave watersports dock replacement, which we brought forward to Ways and Means. The only decision that we could get developed effectively through all parties was not to move forward this year and to come up with a better plan, but to resolve some of the safety issues down there. And that's what we're moving on. We had, as we voted for earlier, the consideration of, expand the scope of study for the beach. Also, moving on, what was that? A lot of it was beach-related, which we already covered. Discussion of municipal parking lots, it was placed on the agenda based on public comments from our September meeting. We had some, some folks that expressed a concern about the use of the parking lot, and so they got brought up, and it's being addressed through the city, and how, how things and what things can be stored in the lot in the rec. But just, just so you know, that the, and people will probably start asking why we have it all fenced off, that the cows are now in place and not cows and a herd of cows fenced in. But it's the communication towers, the temporary communication towers that we put as we go through, or as the water current goes through and starts refurbishing the water tank. All those cell towers have to come off and put on a temporary pole. So that's what you're going to see going up and over in the parking lot while that goes on. And I can't recall, you remember the length of time it was going to take to do that? Or it's?
Well, I don't have, there's a contract. The question is whether.
It can be fulfilled at the same time.
They're supposed to be out of there by the time the March beach season starts.
Correct.
Or the rest is going to change.
Yes, it will. But that's it, that's what, that's what we're going to be seeing up there, going on. That's it. Our next meeting date is November fourth, two thousand thirteen. As of contract, not that it has to do with real property, but contracts being signed up tonight in Charleston County would be for the expansion of the road at the other end of connector, which is good for entire, all the residents, you know, getting ingress and egress off the island on this next beach season. Which was interesting was that, and within that contract is a hundred and eighty window that they have to make it in, or else they'll be fined penalties.
We quizzed them a week, two weeks ago about, where are you? Because we want it done before the season starts. And they came back with a fairly detailed response, which was, pleased with Richard Turner, I think, visited Pratika. And of course, they'd have to meet the milestones, what is, the contract hasn't been worked tonight. They'll be mobilizing, and it'll disrupt the Christmas season, but they should be done, all things considered, by, by spring, whether they make it March Day or not, I'm not sure. They do have penalties in place.
Yes.
So the penalties usually comes performance.
Correct.
We'll see how that goes. I'm looking forward to that work.
She's under the beach computer.
All right. Any questions for real property?
Well, yeah, I do have one related question. We had an accident at the Marina where we had a, basically a piling, just really the dock taken, taken out pretty bad. Can you give us an update, Linda, of what's going on and the status to get that settled?
Yes, sir. We will be filing a claim against the boat captain's insurance. We have, we have asked the Marina manager and his staff to get some estimates, and, you know, we're looking to have three estimates to be able to file the claim, and we've only gotten one so far. So we're in the process of getting the estimates for the repair to that piling. It is going to be a significant event. If for some reason there is some problem with the boat captain's insurance, then it would fall to the city's insurance. And just to remind everybody, the city's dock insurance has a twelve thousand five hundred dollar deductible.
What about that boat that's stuck in there?
That's the one that hit it, correct?
No, no. That, that one's one that has been left for three months.
It's not going anywhere.
They don't need to go anywhere currently.
Have we lost any usage of the dock?
No, we haven't, fortunately.
Wow. It's a dramatic, if you haven't seen it, it's a pretty dramatic injury to the, to the piling.
We were very fortunate that our staff and the gentleman's son was, was on the dock as well, and nobody was hurt, no one got thrown in the water, and we had no property damage with the exception of the, of the piling and the dock, so.
How hard did he hit it? Hard. Hard. Any more for real property?
No, thank you, Linda.
Okay. You have any possession, minutes from the accommodation stacks, the planning commission? Any questions, concerns you can pass on to them? Heard, all right. Moving on, bills are already in your possession. We'll move up to ordinance two thousand thirteen dash eleven. This is second reading, and ordinance amending Title One, Government Administration, Chapter Ten, Purchasing Procedures, Section One dash ten dash ten. Financial interests of city officials and employees prohibit the City of Alapalms Code Ordinance to permit the award of contracts to city employees and public auction for the sale of city personnel property and surplus supplies under certain conditions. I'll move for second reading. Suspend the reading for. Seconded. Anybody have any questions on this? It's been a while since we visited. This is, we're allowing city employees to bid on equipment that the city is deemed to be surplus or taking out service.
And basically, our, our existing code has just been silent on whether or not it was okay to do that. And often when we open bids on this equipment, some of the best bids that we get are from city employees. So this will, this will answer the question about whether or not it's allowable for us to accept those bids. We will be writing a new procedure that, that will accompany this change to, to outline this, the circumstances as to when it's accepted, so we don't cause any.
That means we can buy the dump truck.
Exactly.
Be sorry about that, I did.
It'd be a hit in your blog. Any other questions? All in favor of second reading, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Looking on, you have in your possession for first reading, we'll do this by Title One, ordinance two thousand thirteen dash ten, and ordinance amending Title Five, Planning Development, Chapter Four, Zoning, Article One, general provisions, Article Three, landscaping and tree removal regulations, City of Alapalms Code Ordinance is to permit, permit removal of hazardous trees causing structural damage, posing clear and imminent threat, structural damage to permanent accessory structures that require rehabilitation. I like that. First reading motion. Motion seconded. We'll discuss this later, but this really is just, you've seen this before, this is just coming back again. The condition now that auxiliary structures that have been required to have a permit, building permit, are now covered under this ordinance. All in favor of the first reading, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Somewhere around here, you have a resolution for the bigger waters. You've got, oh, you don't have to sign it. Please read the resolution.
Whereas in two thousand twelve, Congress passed the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act, and whereas the purpose of the act was to reauthorize the national flood insurance program and to make it self-sustainable, and whereas the act passed without examining the affordability of implementation, and whereas, beginning in October two thousand thirteen, property owners, owners purchasing or renewing flood insurance policies realize the first impacts of premium increases dictated by this act, and whereas properties constructed to the codes in place at the time, but prior to nineteen sixty-eight or the implementation of the federal flood program, have been considered to have subsidized flood premiums, and these properties will be the most severely impacted by the Bigger Waters Act, and whereas increases will vary depending on the flood elevations and the amount of coverage, and whereas, new premiums for owners of these homes in order to maintain the same coverage escalate as much as five hundred percent or more, and whereas such dramatic new expense in a still fragile economy may result in uninsured structures, foreclosures, and financial losses due to devaluation of the property. Now therefore, be it resolved on this day, October twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, that the mayor and city council of the City of Alapalms implore members of Congress to delay implementation of the act, initiate the affordability study, and consider a more gradual implementation to make the flood insurance program sustainable.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Motion seconded. Of course, it's something we've been working on for a while. We have contacted, we've sent letters to our congressmen and senators. We've heard back from Scott Sanford-Colling. All they're telling us is, we're working on it in Washington, we hear you, but they don't know where it's going to go. Hopefully, with the human cry that's going up all along the coast, Mississippi, Louisiana, Florida, now ourselves, et cetera, I understand the state of South Carolina is taking this stuff as well. Hopefully something can be done that's more palatable than what's being implemented now. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. One other proclamation, that's declaring November National Pancreatic Cancer Month. Please read.
Whereas in two thousand thirteen, an estimated forty-five thousand two hundred and twenty people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival. relative survival rate in the single digits at just six percent. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is late stage and sixty, and seventy-three percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the five year of their diagnosis, while ninety-four percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately six hundred deaths will occur in South Carolina in two thousand and thirteen. Whereas the incidence and death rate for pancreatic cancer are increasing and pancreatic cancer is anticipated to move from the fourth to the second leading cause of cancer death in the United States by two thousand and twenty. Whereas the United States Congress passed the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act last year, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop scientific frameworks for strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the first and only national patient advocacy organization that serves the pancreatic cancer community in the City of Alapalms, South Carolina, and nationwide for focusing its efforts on public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. Whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in the City of Alapalms support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of the City of Alapalms are enhanced as a, as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Therefore be it resolved that Mayor Richard F. Cronin designates the month of November two thousand and thirteen as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Alapalms. Richard F. Cronin, mayor.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion carries. Did I ever know? All right, and the last item of business, just quickly, we have our miscellaneous business, we call it reconsideration of city sponsored events. Remember, we approved as a city sponsored event, an activity to be held in Wild Dooms, actually next week, I believe. The intention in this reconsideration is to remove it as a city sponsored event. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
If you're interested, there's a tie. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good. It's now eight sixteen. I'd like to declare, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned. Next meeting again will follow Ways and Means. Next one, on the nineteenth.